Communications manager doing the public.
Leslie Hervey interim clerk.
Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Commissioner Denise Streethouse.
Jeff Aludo County Administrator.
Thank you all so much. Stephanie Semeroduma is President of the Board. We will move forward as we always do in our regular meetings with a silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. And so I was just asked that we think about as we have our silent prayer, this spirit of murder in our land with these young people. And that it continues, continues. I know people are trying to work and to work towards some interventions. These young people, in my opinion, are doing adult things. And some of them are just crossfire and get shot. So, you know, at that age, we had the last one, I believe, was thirteen and we had a sixteen year old. And just their brain does not even develop for reasoning or making good decisions or considering consequences until they say twenty-five is when your brain actually develops to that point. Some, I imagine, would take a little longer. But I just ask that you have a silent prayer for those families that are involved, please. Thank you. Amen. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our next order of business, we have a couple of presentations. And our first one is a proclamation. Okay, Leslie, can we have a motion to approve our minutes from the previous session?
Second.
Commissioner Semeroduma.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. So in front of us, we have a proclamation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And all of our commissioners, of course, signed it and we'll move forward and read this proclamation. I believe it ends on the fifteenth. So I was just thinking about the fact, you know, we have our Black History Month and other months. And, and I was thinking that we don't have any Hispanics up here, but it shouldn't be a Hispanic up here to advocate for Hispanic month. And so we're just really happy to be able to acknowledge that we tried to reach the Director of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We've been trying to, couldn't get him, but it's okay. We will keep this on our record. And if we are able to contact him, we'll pass it on to him. And the proclamation reads, whereas each year, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those whose ancestors are indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas what began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight, to cover a thirty day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth.
Whereas the date September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas this year's theme Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope, encourages us to reflect on the legacy of Hispanic people who have influenced our nation's history and serve today as leaders in all aspects of our national life, from Supreme Court and halls of Congress to boardrooms and main streets across the United States.
And whereas we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society, while also rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face. And whereas Hispanics continue their rich tradition of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of Hamilton County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Hamilton County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents and county employees to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves to a shared future of healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities for all.
Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Hispanic Heritage Month in all of Hamilton County and signed by all our commissioners. Yeah. So we'll move on to our next proclamation, which is a proclamation recognizing October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one as Indigenous Peoples' Day. As you know, it was celebrated also on the twelfth. But we decided that we were going to do it on the fourteenth because we had to change our meetings and all that. And so we as a county can decide what day we want to celebrate it. So we are celebrating it today and I'll start with the proclamation. Whereas Columbus Day is observed as a federal holiday on second Monday in October. And whereas the day recognizes October the twelfth landing of Christopher Columbus on an island in the Caribbean, marking the Europeans' first contact with the New World. And whereas the contact began centuries of settlement on lands already occupied by Native Peoples of Americas and exploitation of the New World's seemingly endless resources. And whereas indigenous Americans experienced conquests, enslavement, displacement, and disease, which disseminated, decimated the population.
Whereas Hamilton County understands that government entities, organizations, and other political institutions should change their policies to support a day of celebration and appreciation for the contributions of the indigenous people and to celebrate our country's variety of indigenous roots and heritage, hair and history, rather. Whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in nineteen ninety, at the first Continental Conference on Five Hundred Years of Indian Resistance, representatives from a hundred and twenty indigenous nations unanimously passed a resolution to transform Columbus Day into an occasion of strengthen, to an occasion to strengthen the process of continental unity and struggle towards liberation. And therefore use the occasion to reveal a more accurate historical record.
And whereas the United States endorsed the United Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December sixteenth, twenty ten, and Article fifteen of the Declaration states, indigenous peoples have the right to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information. States should take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the indigenous peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of society. And whereas Hamilton County recognizes the value of educational integrity and search for truth in telling the story of our foundation and acknowledges past injustices to all Native American nations. And as a gesture of reconciliation, desires to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Now therefore be it proclaimed, Hamilton County hereby urges that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people of this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that all indigenous people add to our county. And we should say country. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim October the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one as Indigenous Peoples' Day in all of Hamilton County and signed by all our commissioners. Thank you so much. So we will move forward to our next item on the agenda, public comments. I have a card here from Nick Talbert.
First of all, Commissioners, President, Vice President, everyone here, I want to thank you for this. This is going to plan to see to eliminate racism. It really will. Because it didn't exist with these people here. I'm hoping that everybody looked at the map. And what I'm looking to do and working with Paul and the city, what we want to do is we're going to take that map of how they mapped out from Canada, North America, and South America. You know how many years it would take to do that? The map that we use today, guess where they got it from? It's very important because racism, they didn't fight over that. They fought over land, food, and women. That was it. It wasn't about race. So we got to go back and I'm hoping and I'm going to be talking to each one of you about, I'll tell you, who's the boss. Both of you guys are bosses, especially Alicia, when we come to put stuff together. I'm telling you, I'll put it together. About being able to put a memorial marker, I already talked to the President of Harris of the Freedom Center, about putting a nice plaque of that map with this documentary on one side and one from the city on the other side. And we are starting the celebration every year. And then we get some of that money they got over there, which they never talked about, the Indians, all the Masons, they were here too. And so I'm digging up the true history, what really went on over there by doing that. And I appreciate it. I love this. I'm taking it over there, throw it to the city, show it to the mayor.
Okay.
So we can see it. And hopefully, if I can, like you said, I don't even know how to do this, but it's, I think the next step is probably going to be just talking about how Paul wants to do this and how to make this thing bigger. Oh yeah, one other thing, real quick, I already talked to the media. I got one media guy says, we do this thing. He said, you're going to put it, just to start over a million views.
Okay.
That's include baseball.
Very good. Well, very glad that you're happy about that. We are too. And when you say Paul, you're saying Paul Booth? Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
He said, if you want to go through, you're out, sit in the meeting because you can turn it again when we can talk about.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We'll move forward. We have, is there anyone on the Zoom? No. Comments and motions from the Commissioners, Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to just give a heads up that next week we will be introducing the proclamation that all of us have signed or will be signing for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So just wanted to say that if there's people out here watching that are survivors or I think last night they just had the Pink Event, Twenty Years, and they brought in Cool in the Gang. So they had a great time down at the Icon. Wanted to also say that this week had a chance to join both of you with a lot of people at the airport, opening a new rental car facility. And it was really nice. And when you look at going into some of these other markets, puts us in line with people being able to come to our airport and easily get to the rental car location and everything's just well connected. So I wanted to give a shout out to the airport on their opening of that. They also did a partnership with Art Works and brought in artists, diverse artists. And it was a really good, really good event. So I wanted to acknowledge that. Wanted to also remind people that the five one three relief bus is still out there. I was in Harrison, Ohio earlier today and they were happy to see us there and got a chance to talk to their Director of Utilities. They have their own Director of Utilities. And they were saying that the assistance with the water and the gas electric, the gas and electric bill really helps because they have a lot of people that are behind on the water bill. They don't want to shut anyone off. So this allows them, they said they help people with the mayor's fund, but that is being drained right now. So this allows them to help with that. So they had a good crowd. And I think they're leaving there and they're on their way to Cleves right now. So if anyone's watching that lives in Cleves, look for the five one three relief bus is on its way. Saw people getting shots as well. So that's always a, a good thing. Harrison's area, I think zip code wise needed a little boost. And still we have, continue to have work to be done there. So I wanted to say that. I also want to thank Greater Emmanuel Apostolic Church Pastor or Bishop, rather, Leventon Daniels for hosting the bus in Finney Town last week. And he was very happy to host us. And so I just wanted to thank them. They had a very good crowd in Finney Town. A lot of people were, were pulling up to get services as well. I want to also let people know if they want to plan in advance, you can go to five one three relief dot org. But we will be headed to Westwood, the bus will be headed to Westwood on Monday, over the Rhine on Tuesday. And I think that's a partnership with the sheriffs. Sheriff McGuffey had requested that and, and it'll be an over the Rhine, not just for the sheriffs, but anyone who's downtown, our employees as well, who may not have gotten vaccinated or who need the booster or the second shot or even the free test kits. So those will be available as well. And then on Wednesday, the bus is in Sharonville. And then Thursday, and then Saturday in Madisonville. So this bus is moving. It's getting all over Hamilton County. And I want to thank Ayesha Howard and JFS team and our public health team and the nurses who actually have said thank you to the five one three relief bus. They like that partnership. So just want to thank them there. The other thing I want to highlight is that another major move for the Black Music Walk of Fame occurred yesterday. Now we can move forward because that lease land agreement now has been signed. The county now is, has full control over the site. And so I, we can move forward and meet our deadline of getting things open and ready to go around the music festival weekend. That's a big weekend for us. We've had to cancel two years in a row. It affects all of us here at the county because it brings in a hundred and seven million dollars of economic impact, the largest of an annual festival in all of Hamilton County. So we do want it to get back up. We want it to get going. And wanted to thank all of the work of the administration and the lawyers here, as well as the administration and lawyers at the city. I want to thank the mayor to help, Mayor John Cranley, that was helping push on the city side. So we didn't have, you know, resistance there. And then I want to thank all the partners that also have input about what goes on at the banks. Want to thank Katie Brown Blackburn with the Bengals and John Martin with the Symphony. Mimi, who runs the, the Icon. So just to make sure all of those partners were okay with it to also move forward. So again, I want to thank my colleagues. We voted on this and got this moving. But again, we were at a stumbling block, but now that stumbling block is gone. So very excited about that. And a lot of, a lot of people are excited to see that. Lastly, Madam President, I just wanted to bring up, we're going into the budget. This will be my first budget with the county. And I'm not as familiar, been, I've been on the Finance Committee, Vice Chair Finance Committee with the city and did a lot of budgets, always balance because we have to balance. We was able to balance it without any layoffs and making sure that we had money to put in, moving us forward. Then I was at the state and was on the Finance Committee at the state. And Commissioner Treehouse knows that's hard and not too many people get to be on there. She and I were both on there. But in the super minority of the budget and they have a process. And so now I'm here at the county and I know COVID was last year. Maybe the budget was done a little different. I'm not sure. But I do have some concerns. I know that it's been decided that we would move in a different direction. But I just really want to know, before we got here, how are we doing the budget? Because I do think it's important to have the departments come forward. They do it at the state. Everybody has to come forward. Budget Director got to come forward. The Attorney General got to come forward with his budget or her budget. The Governor's Office got to come forward. All of Public Safety has to come forward. And we get a chance to ask questions publicly about the different budgets. I'm not sure how we've been doing it in the past. I had gotten word that we were trying to do something at maybe Covitzas Center that would allow us to still be safe, but that every department, everybody that we fund would have to come forward before we released a budget, even to us or to the public. I have several questions. Being a new person, I've always had questions about the budget. It's the most important thing we do. And I just wanted to put that out there because I know we're not allowed to really talk to each other because against the law. And I want to put it out there for the people. I'm for having a public before the budget gets released. I haven't even met all of the heads of these departments. To hear their thinking, to hear what they're putting in the budget, to ask questions that the citizens may have asked me to ask before we just have a public hearing. I know that the U.S. World Cup is, folks are coming and we had to change a date. And I appreciate the World Cup and look forward to seeing them and seeing what that brings for our county. But to just push off the budget in that format, I just wanted to express, I do have concerns. And I, I know we're going a different direction, but I just want to let, let them know at some point, I'd like to have that opportunity like other prior commissioners may have had. And if they haven't, like I said, let's do some, I'm willing to do something new. But I've never been anywhere where I didn't get to question what the Budget Director's thoughts are, what these departments' thoughts are. Cause I think we over the, we got the clerk's budget, the court's budget. I have not had a chance to question and see what they're about. So I don't know if there's a chance to do that. Maybe it's not. But maybe in the future, I do want to put that out there. And I wanted to at least express, Madam President, my point of view and where I was coming from and trying to request that that type of process that would be on YouTube, Facebook, and wherever people can watch and also give me an opportunity, as well as yourself and Commissioner Treehouse. You probably all have been through the process, but give us opportunity. I want to find out their thoughts, why they thought this was important, why that's not important, what about this idea as we move forward with a very, very important budget. So that's all I have, Madam President, and looking forward to, you know, looking forward, hopefully to be able to have that opportunity at some point.
Thank you. And certainly input by staff and for our ability to be able to question and get recommendations from staff is built in that process. But I won't speak for administration. Jeff, if you'd like to speak to what Vice President concerns are.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So yeah, the, the budget right now is on target for release on October twenty-sixth. So that would be the first time it'd be publicly released. The board will be briefed on the, the details of the administration's recommended budget in advance of that time. But we will do the public release on twenty-sixth, on the twenty-sixth, typically that's done during a staff meeting. At times we've done it during legislative meetings, just depending upon the, the timing, which then brings us into the point where the budget is firmly in the court of the Porter County Commissioners. At that point, it's not the administration's recommendation anymore. It is then the, the budget of the board to adopt and manipulate, modify as, as it deems fit to fit its policy priorities. At that point, we also go into the public hearing process. We'll schedule several public hearings over the course of the next month or so after the release to hear from the public. And what we have typically done, and maybe Madam Vice President to answer your question, what we've typically done is after we release the budget, pretty much every staff meeting after the release of the budget, we will have an item on the agenda for budget deliberation and budget review. So it could be a point in time where the commission can ask questions of the administration for answers on specific budget issues. If there are specific departments that want to come forward, they can come forward at that point in time and, and state something about what they, what they were asking for, what was not reflected in the budget they were hoping to see. Or if the board has an issue with a specific department or functional area, it'd say, I, I just talk maybe about economic development. If the board says, we'd really like to focus on this area of the budget. We'd like to do one of our staff meetings as a, as a time to talk specifically about economic development, the budget, or whatever it is. You could have that opportunity as well. So there will be opportunities throughout the course of the, of the budget process to make sure departments can have input and to make sure there can be back and forth of communication between the board and departments to ensure that by the time we get into early December, which is I think when we have targeted to act, have the board act on the budget, that all of the board's questions will have been answered by that point so that we can move forward with a balanced budget into twenty twenty-two.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just want to ask, I appreciate what the administrator is saying. And I appreciate the administration. However, we're the ones that have to get voted on by the people. So my question was, I didn't understand originally, we were asked if we could maybe utilize Duke Energy Center and all of the different departments would be able to come. So we could spend ample time, whatever that time is, talking to these heads, the head of the treasurer, our treasurer, our auditor, our Hamilton, the Hamilton County Courts, all of the departments that fall under this budget. And we can ask questions and get a clear understanding prior to releasing a budget. I don't know what they presented to the administration. They present to the administration and then administration do what they want to do and then give me, and then we can't even talk. The three of us can't talk to each other. So I don't know when we would, when you say, well, if the board wants to do this, we, I got to go get two votes, but the administration has to get no votes to get something done. That's a little backwards. So that's why I'm expressing this. We can move how we want to move, but I want to put this out to the people. And I said last week, we got to come with some new ways, if we haven't been doing it that way, some new ways. There's new technology with some new ideas and new transparency. And what we have been doing here, and there's nothing wrong with it, but I don't know if that's the direction that, or the people that voted for me, I don't know if that's the direction that necessarily they want to go. I want to be able to talk to these department heads to find out what they are thinking, what is needed, why it's not needed, or it is needed, or even some of our ideas. Now I don't want a budget. You give it to me. You done baked the cake already. And the only thing we can put on is maybe some icing and some sprinkles. I want to be a part of baking the cake and seeing what is it? Cause I haven't talked to all these department heads. I don't know. Maybe they got an idea or something that I don't know anything about. So I was looking forward to that process. I know that the World Cup is coming, so we had to bump the, the budget piece. But I just thought that was kind of the wrong thing to scrap the budget because World Cup is coming. I'm bored. We can do both. But I would like to, what we're doing now is here is a budget. Board, if you go get two board members that will. Board, if you go get two Board members that will agree with you to question someone, we can bring them in. But if one Board member wants to, I gotta go now get two votes to ask about the budget. I don't want to go get two votes. I want to do the same as the administration. They'd have to get no votes. I want all of these directors to be able to hear from them, oh, what are they doing in their departments? And what do they think the needs are? And then we can go from there. So that's what my thinking was, and I wanted just to put it out there. I know that I'm outnumbered in the vote on this and, cause I got an email from the Administrator. Um, and nothing against it, it's just the way the system is designed and people are asking for systemic change. And so to get change, it can't just be, you know, I just can't just have my nameplate changed. We want to change systems. So I don't want a system where you hand me a budget and then I get to put some sprinkles on. Move this here, move that there. So I'm just, I haven't had a chance to, to, uh, participate in this process. Some others have told me, who was years and years ago here, that they did have to, people did have to come before them. Um, but if you mix them with the public's debate, plus it admit, plus the head of department, I think that makes it a little difficult. So anyway, that was my thinking on it. Um, I was excited about it and I just want to express that I'm disappointed that we are, are not able to move forward with that model. I thought that model originally presented to us made sense. I was excited about it and, uh, looking forward to hearing from the different departments. But I just wanted to express that, uh, and put that on, uh, out there to both of you. I know I can't talk to you, so I wanted to get it out there, both you, both to you, and also express the people who, who may, uh, have asked for those type of changes that, uh, I did present that and, and we're moving forward. So we can't do it this year, uh, which I disagree with. I want to definitely put it in the books for next year.
So we will do it this year. Um, delay is not denial. We had the 22nd, that was a date that we planned on. We didn't know that the World Cup was going to, um, representatives were going to come here on that same day. It wasn't planned that way, so we had to kind of switch some stuff around. But as far as getting a vote to talk to different department heads, you don't have to do that. We're all going to, uh, get the budget. We review what I add on, take away, you add on, take away, then have that department head come in to answer our questions. So we are still very much involved in the process. It's just a, a delay because of something unexpected. Um, so we will be involved and we, you know, it's our budget. Like as, um, Jeff was saying, he presents it, but we make a decision. But no, you, you know, we don't need a vote to be able to have, we want department heads in. Um, and if you have questions or, uh, something you don't understand, I don't understand, uh, then that's our opportunity to talk to them. It's, it's only a delay.
No, Madam President, I just think it's about structure. I want to hear from all of them. Originally, we were going to hear from all departments. They would all have to come, like they do at the state. They all have to come, whether you got a question or not, they all have to come and present. And that's what we were doing, and I think they should all have to come because maybe I don't have a question because I didn't catch it. Maybe they got something I didn't catch, or maybe they got a good idea, or maybe I don't have no questions for it, but I wanted to hear what they're doing. So that's what the, is, is not so much, we won't have input. I want to have all the departments, everybody can see them and hear them. Everybody is out and open and maybe they're, maybe they say something and I say, oh, wow, that's something I was thinking, or we had said something about that, or let me get more information. But I don't necessarily, I won't know every question because I haven't talked to every department here. I can't be responsible for a budget for all these departments and I've never seen them. I got, we go out here and we run and they say, what does the County Commission do? Oh, we're over the budget and we ain't never met the people. You might have, I'm not saying you, um, but I haven't. I can't be out here, I'm, I, we, we in charge, but all we doing is putting sprinkles and putting a little, maybe we can put a little something on the cake. I don't get to choose what ingredients goes in the cake. So I just think for me, it will help me hearing these different departments. And then maybe there's something, uh, I hadn't thought of that, oh yeah, that maybe we should look into that. So that's what I was looking forward to. Uh, it's been COVID, we haven't had a chance to really, I don't know, I don't know what's going on over there in the courts. I'd like to hear from them, what's their budget and what they're doing? I don't know everything that's happening in the Clerk's office. There'll probably be maybe potentially, uh, a, a changeover, but what, what, what do they do? Where they putting the money? I don't know. I don't know everything that's happening in the Recorder's Office. What are you doing? What's your thoughts? Why did you ask for this or not that? So that's what I, if we gonna be over everybody, then we should meet everybody. And everybody should have to come and present to us. So I don't know if we have the timeline, I don't know the exact time this budget has to be passed by. Um, but I think that should be one session. Then there's a session, okay, now the budget's been released. And then we look at it, cause now I'm looking at it after hearing from everybody. And then the next one is the people, like, you know, what we already have scheduled. So that was the reason I had asked, uh, for that, and I just wanted to explain, uh, what my thoughts was. It's not to be difficult, but that's the reason that I was looking to that. And I think we could do both, you're absolutely right. World Cup is here, we gotta take them around and see if this is something that can bring money to our county. And we want to bring more money. But at the same time, we should also hear from every department head, present their budget. What is it they looking for? Why is it they want to do it? And then that would help us when we, at least it would help me when I started looking at it. And if there's some changes or something should be added, it might help me, uh, as I move forward. So that, that was a thought, Madam President.
Thank you. And Jeff, it might be helpful as we look at those elected officials like the Court, like the Sheriff, uh, for the authority that we have as it relates to their budget. And, um, it's a little different than the, than our own department head. So, um, so.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment, I asked you the process, um, because I think there's some confusion. So we, this process does run like what we experienced at the State House, wherein the budget is presented and then we have all the different departments come in and explain their portion of the budget and why they've asked for what they've asked for. And we get to ask questions of those different departments. And so I agree, it's entirely appropriate. And that is what happens as we have the budget on our staff agenda every week so that we have that opportunity to ask questions of, uh, whether it's the Clerk's Office or JFS or anybody else, whether they're elected on their own or part of, um, the county administration. That's the process. And so those are what those meetings are for, every staff meeting. And we have in the past had the Sheriff in and, and other departments in to talk about their, um, portion of the budget and why they have, um, asked for what they've asked for. So if we can, maybe, uh, Commissioner Reese, I hear you saying, maybe we need to do that in a more structured way where we know which departments are coming in on which days so that we make sure that we have all of them in individually to talk about their budgets. Um, we've done that in the past, not maybe as structured as that, but we, we, I think that's certainly a good idea. But the meeting that, uh, has been referred to is not that, it's not part of that process. The meeting is an outcropping of, um, something that happened when Commissioner Portun and Monzel were here and I had just been elected. And there was some conversation about quarterly meetings or quarterly budgets, uh, with, uh, that we would have. And, and we quickly recognized the quarterly budgets were not a good idea, uh, because it's so time consuming and so expensive to do that and pretty destabilizing really. And so what we said was, let's instead have quarterly meetings, um, with all of the departments, all of the electeds. Not so that, so much so that we can, um, ask them questions, because that's really better during a staff meeting, but rather so they could all hear from one another about what the priorities were. You know, county administration, uh, Jeff would kind of set the stage and say, here's, here are the resources we have, here's where sales tax is, here's where property tax is, and kind of level set, because we used to have no extra money at all, anywhere, because we had not passed a sales tax. Um, and so, um, it was kind of level setting the conversation about the, the budget, uh, the revenue that we had available and how these departments, how they interplayed with one another. When one department asks for more, somebody else has got to take less in order to balance the budget. So that's what that, that, um, that meeting was for. We did a couple of them, I think they were over in Memorial Hall, it was pre-COVID, so we could sit closer to one another. Um, and we did a couple of them, I don't remember how many, but it was a helpful exercise to have everybody in the same room at the same time. It, the timing of it is, is a little bit less important because the real questioning gets asked during the staff meetings. And so, um, I regret that we have to change the time of the meeting. I also look forward to these meetings, kind of to see everybody in, in the room. And there's a huge benefit to all the departments for the same reasons. Um, so whatever date we come up with, I will happily support and look forward to that. And some of the electeds that we have now, we're not, we're not around when we did this because we didn't do it during COVID. Um, so I think it'll be a new experience for a lot of us, um, and new people in the room. But I think it's very valuable to, to do both, right? It's this big meeting that we do to hear from everybody and, and let everybody hear from, at, at the same time. And then it's also these individual sessions where we can really dig in because we've already got the budget in front of us. Um, and you can, you know, page through when the Sheriff's in front of us and go to her section of the budget and then ask questions of the Sheriff as she comes in. Um, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, the, um, we've got, um, budget analysis going on behind the scenes. And so the, our, our staff is, um, dedicated to certain departments. So the, some, somebody in the Budget Department has the Sheriff and, and they've accumulated the information and they're bringing forward that information. So they'll be on hand too, to say, this is why the County Administration's recommendation reflects the Sheriff's budget with the staff oversight of that. So that's kind of, um, how it's intended to work. Um, but I don't disagree that, you know, as we have, say, we have four, five, I don't know how many staff meetings between now and when we want to, our, our target date to pass the budget. Maybe we plot out who's coming in at which meeting, so we've got a heads up. We can do our homework with the budget we've got in front of us and say, if the Sheriff's come and then I'm going to bone up on the Sheriff's stuff, um, when she's in front of us. And so maybe to plot that out to make sure we get all of them in here, um, and we can ask questions in that way. So I just wanted to clarify that, that's how it has gone in the past. Um, and I think it, it has, COVID aside, um, but I think it's, it's worked pretty well. So beyond.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you, uh, thank you for that. And, um, uh, that would be good. And I, I do agree, because I have not really, I met most of them on Zoom and then we, you know, we got right in. But that overall picture piece will be very helpful. So, um, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to do that, that'd be great.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things. I was going to mention CBG too, that, um, Candace McGraw and her team really put together, um, a spectacular facility so that travel in this region is simplified, uh, with the rental car facility. So I wanted to applaud, uh, Candace and her team for that. Um, also, I received an email earlier today about something that's going on at Children's Hospital. I just want to highlight it. They have test kits available at their urgent care sites. So we talked a, a lot about the availability of these test kits. They're at the libraries, they're at, uh, in the mobile units. Also, Children's Hospital has them available at their urgent cares at Green Township, Anderson Township and Mason. Not only because it's, it's a good thing to do to, uh, allow people to have the availability of the test kits, but if people are coming into the emergency rooms, which they are, to get tested, that is not an emergent situation. And so they're trying to make sure that the emergencies are being dealt with in the EDs and people that just need to get tested can take a test kit home and do it, um, and there's a virtual element to it, but they can do it at home. So anyway, I just wanted to announce that, um, that that's happening now at Children's Hospitals. Um, and also, I, I did, uh, go out, um, the mobile bus was at the Walnut Hill Street Festival. Um, and so I, I wanted to recognize the hard work also of the 513 Relief Team, Aesha and, uh, JFS and Public Health, all those folks were out there, Commissioner Reese was out there too. Um, so it was, it was a nice add-on for that festival and they seemed pretty busy, especially on the JFS end. Um, and then lastly, it's a little early and I'll, I'll do this probably again next week, but the one stop that we have, um, monthly now is going to be on Friday, October 29th, um, over at Duke Energy Center from 10 to 1. This is the One Stop Resource Center for folks that, um, need help in the community connecting to resources. And so I, I talk about this all the time and, um, Trina is the one that heads this up for the administration. But I want to run through very quickly some of the things that are available so that people understand how this one stop is truly that and trying to serve the needs, uh, in kind of one place at one time to make it a little bit easier. It's similar to some of our mobile units, actually, now I think about it. But they've got the, the vaccines, they've got birth certificates, uh, addiction services, mental health care, child support services, veteran services, homelessness services, education, job readiness, you know, job, uh, there, there's information related to housing. And so these one stops can be really valuable. And now that we're doing them at Duke, we've got the room to have as many providers as want to join and as many participants as want to join. So again, um, that's on Friday, October 29th. I'll probably do a reminder next week as well. But I do want to make sure that we're promoting that for people that are struggling to connect, um, in the community, especially those that are re-entering, um, from the Justice Center. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Have a few comments. Um, it's still Domestic Violence Awareness Month this month. I still have my pink on for, uh, cancer, um, Breast Cancer Awareness Month also. Really just want to thank all the businesses and all the sports stadiums who, uh, Bridget happened to be out on a Friday night and took the most beautiful pictures of the purple. And I rode through on Saturday night and it was just really unbelievable, um, how they have been involved without any hesitancy. So I want to thank my colleagues for recognizing and being a part. I'm still wearing my ribbon and have my purple on. And, and I think that we've brought some awareness. This Saturday at 7:30, I mentioned I'll be on Let's Talk Cincy, not just me, but some other people to talk about their experiences, uh, with domestic violence. And so, um, if you have a moment to, to look at that, that would be great. Um, also, I was the main speaker at a, um, it was, uh, cornerstone, I need my glasses, equity, equity training that they had down at, uh, City Lengths. And I was the main speaker there as they talked about trauma. And so I truly enjoyed that opportunity. Also, we talked about CBG. Um, I attended the Executive Board Meeting for CVB Cincinnati Visitors Bureau, uh, yesterday. Uh, a lot of great things are going on. And then of course today, um, I attended the OKI Board of Directors Meeting and Hamlin County was awarded, and I thought Eric might be here, but we were awarded a grant to, uh, for the banks area for the variable signage that we wanted to get, uh, done on the bank. So we were just at the line, they cut it off at the red line and we were right above it. So, um, Eric was there and then really exciting, uh, for that to happen. Um, let's see. I want to also, and I'm going to move on to Jeff, I have a, uh, personal comment I'd like to make, uh, not as the, the President of the Board, but I needed to say this because I have to be true to myself. And so, um, yesterday I saw a press conference that took place on the Banks Lot 28, uh, with, uh, Vice President Reese and Mayor Cranley. This has nothing to do with Vice President Reese's, because her idea was, is a fantastic one with the Walk of Fame. This concept was hers and the Commission and her, uh, Board voted on that. And so it continues to be something that's really exciting, that will bring lots of people here. We actually had a dedication in July, a fantastic, uh, Hollywood, uh, dedication. And that was one reason for my surprise. It took place on Banks Lot 28. Um, I really couldn't believe what I heard. And it was mostly about the city and their, uh, involvement with this, uh, Lot 28. And, um, I know the county and the city have been involved tremendously with the banks, where the county has given all, over a mil, uh, billion dollars toward that whole Banks area. Um, and so it was indicated, um, that there was this great collaboration. Well, I want to be very specific about Lot 28, that, uh, the county attempted to collaborate and to partner on Lot 28, uh, tried to get funding from the city. And, uh, the city did not give us any money for the Walk of Fame. Um, so we went on because it was so important to us to move forward and it's such a great concept that we have committed nine million dollars so far. May end up having to put more into it as we move forward in the development. So it was just really to me, um, just a slap in the face, uh, that the city was trying to take credit for something that they refused to even financially help us on specifically Lot 28. Um, so, um, as President of the Board, and I'll say that now, I just can't allow the Board or this county to be used as a political pawn, uh, when what is being said is not true. And so you, they say that, you know, you believe none of what you hear, half of what you see. So I'm just hoping that the residents that are listening, the people that are watching, that this is a political season. Things will be said and done that may not be true. We have worked very hard specifically on Lot 28 to make it happen. And so we did it on our own, but we want, we move forward. So I'm just imploring that the people that are watching and listening, that you get your research and make sure that what is being said is true. And so I had no, of course, no problem with Vice President Reese being there, that's her baby. And and so as I said, we've supported it, but I was just really appalled of the the picture that was presented yesterday as it relates to the city's involvement in that particular process. So I needed to say that, and that's only my opinion. And so I will move forward with that and yes.
I just want to make sure because I don't want anyone to think I would ever stand with anything that's a fraud. We did Lot 28 before I got here. If you look at the banks, and I want to take a step back. The banks is 198 acres. It was the first place that African Americans, Harriet Tubman, when they led us to freedom that we emerged on. African Americans, and I know President Dumas speaks out on this too, it's where we lived. Then we were kicked out and moved to the West End. Well, today we honored a proclamation on indigenous people because they were first on the land. We have redeveloped the banks. I was on the city when we first started, had a lot of false starts between the city and the county. I think Platoon was, Mr. Platoon was on council back then too. So then years kept going by and when you look at 198 acres, you ride down, there's not one African American name on a building, nowhere. There's not one African American business restaurant bar that I'm aware of. 198 acres. When you look at the names that are out there and the businesses. And so we have the Freedom Center and I was a part of that when it first got going. I think it's about an acre, say, give them an acre. So we're under, we're now to 197. I wasn't on the board when the music venue, there was a fight between the city and a county on the music venue, where to put it. And then once it went up, it was called the icon and the naming rights and the board had nothing to do with who name gets on it or not, even though it's on public property. When I was running, there were so many people that may not make it to these meetings because they don't understand the county versus the city. But there were so many people, whether it was Lincoln Ware, who's been in the music business for over 40 years. Whether it was Otis Williams, who's 85 years old, created the duop sound and never been honored. Or Bootsy Collins, who is a rock and roll Hall of Famer and his name is not on one building. And it was a thought that, wow, we came here with 100, when it was 198 acres and we there, there's not anything. Just said a billion dollars of public money spent. African Americans nowhere. So the thought was this only thing was left was Lot 28. Everything else is mostly gone on the banks. It's the last corner, half of acre out of 198. And when I got here, I said, I had meetings because we can't talk to each other, which is the toughest thing about the job. I met with the administrator and said, hey, these people are left behind. You've got this, you've got all these buildings we put up. And then we asked for the fourth quarter report, what are we doing as a county on contracts? And $16 million was to fix up the stadiums. 1,400 only went to minorities. So once again, we not included. And then the music festival that comes every single year and brings in more money than anything in terms of a festival on an ongoing basis. 107 million dollars of impact and those dollars go to the CFA, which is the Facilities Authority. Those sales tax dollars go into our coffer. Down there, the parking fund, it goes into a restricted fund. But we still ride down there and it's 198 acres and it's nothing. So we came with the half of acre and I I didn't know it was going to be at this lot. I said, I don't care what lot it is. We got to have inclusion. And so it just happened to be Lot 28. And when you're dealing with these things, it's unfortunate that they put things in where if you do anything on the banks, they got one person that's in charge, construction, they got to be over it. One architect, got the whole thing, you can't bring nothing new in. And believe me, there's no diversity there, right? So when I brought up this thing, I had, I knew that I had to, the the legal thing says, if you have something in Lot 28, you gotta have a Bengals. They got to approve it. You get, you know, so they don't, they're not upset. You got to have the icon, they're right next door, they've got to approve it. And they're owned by the Symphony, who also owns PNC Pavilion, also owns River Ben, the Rose in Dayton, and I believe runs the TAF. So you had to get them, then you have to get the people who run it, Mimi, they've got to be okay with. So I knew before bringing it back, those people had to be okay. We got it done. We got the money, we put in the budget and then Madam President says we being transparent, I got to be transparent on this. We approved a budget that had the Black Music Walk of Fame in it, like two days before. It was on Zoom. And then the day of, the first day of my in-person meeting, that's why I was late. People said, where was she? I had to tell the administrator, I said, where is the paperwork? We just showed it to us on Zoom. The paperwork was different, the front page was the same, but the Black Music Walk of Fame was left out. And I had to go down there, talk to him, the administrator and Holly, and Holly retyped. I don't know where the typing got mixed up at. So we had to do that. It's 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 double standards is what I'm here to break up. So when we got going in it, in order for us to get moving on it, and I had to go out and get private money. They said, oh, you got to go get private money. I said, really, the Black Music Walk of Fame, the stars? We ain't even funded. I had to go get Procter and Gamble, thank the Lord they came through. But we're paying for infrastructure. And when I got here, this thing, why was Lot 28 not developed? Ask yourself, we got a garage that stopped. We didn't go further because we didn't have the money. And then we had to get the city and we knew that the city and the county, they can't, they always fight. And I ran on that because I had been at the city, vice mayor, and I understand the city. And I've been in the county, being a state representative, I was going to hopefully hope, try to bring that to the table. So I've been at a lot of things that I didn't know about, a lot of things. And I know that everybody has their things and I go with them. The two things that I'm working on right now, three things. Black Music Walk of Fame, 513 relief bus. And and also the the tax issue that we were trying to work on with seeing if we can help with MSD bills. But I'll be honest, every time I show up, it's always a problem. Everybody else got some, ain't no problem. We do a women and girls, ain't no problem. Stay, I I did what you told me to do, just read the list, y'all took the pitch, no problem. We come with the drug and alcohol, Lisa, stand over here, I did it. We had Juneteenth, stand over here, I'm there. But when I show up, we always got some kind of protocol problem. Now, the reason Mayor John Cranley was there is because I was asked to call him because they said, Reese, if you're gonna do Lot 28, you gotta get the mayor. And the mayor ain't going with it because the county, they've been fighting. So if we were going to have the city pay for it, we wouldn't have never had a snag a tooth. It was gravel, it's still gravel. It would have continued to be gravel. They weren't going to do it. So now that we got Katie Blackburn with the Bengals come in and said, yes, we're in and we gonna help with the design. They did the original concept design that they paid for because they care about what goes there and they got to sign off. We got the Symphony on board, said, yes, we don't have no problem with it, we own the icon. We're willing to work together because we realized this was the missing link. This is an inclusion project, not ex, because we've been excluded with 198 acres. Now, nobody is saying anything about these other nine, 197 other acres. As long as people, we were locked out, as long as it wasn't inclusive, it's it's normal business. We clapping, we grinning, we going, where are we supposed to stand? We're happy to be there, but I'm coming down here to challenge it. So the press conference yesterday, which originally everyone was invited, but couldn't make it. The the press conference yesterday was to announce that even after we passed it, they told me that I had to go get private money, administrator, you got to go get private money, we did it. Then it said, you gotta get the mayor on board. So if the mayor wasn't important, why'd you send me to the mayor? Because he got to be in, he got to be on it. Then after that, we had to still get the, in writing, the land had to be transferred. So that's what was the the deal yesterday, that the city is saying, we out. We ain't gonna come in here, we ain't gonna get in the way of it. We ain't gonna fight it, we ain't gonna sue you about it. We are out of it and that's what we wanted them to be, out of it, but we needed it in writing. And so that's what we were doing yesterday and the people we were, those other individuals. But I'm just gonna be, you know, transparent, we all are individually elected. And my number one priority is to whatever I said I'm running on, that's what I'm coming to do. Now, we spending more time on this than we are on getting the budget. And that's what I kind of, and this is not a knock, it's just, again, I told you, I'm coming here with some new ways, some new ideas, and unless it's in the Ohio Revised Code, AKA the law, we not doing it like we've been doing it. We not gonna sit around and just, I don't want to be window dressing. I don't want to put sprinkles on the cake. I don't, they didn't send me down here, they sent me down to help bake the cake. Now, one of the things I'm very excited about, we're gonna be doing, these stars are sitting out here. And I'm happy that the airport, which I hope, are looking at having them. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, I couldn't let that stay out there. I understand, I appreciate what you said to me, but I gotta, and I'm not trying to stand up for the mayor. I got to be clear, we couldn't have pulled this off if the mayor did not sign over the lease. Now, when we voted for this, it wasn't signed. We voted for this July 1st, it's October. We talking about opening up next year. So we gotta get this signed if we're gonna move forward. And so that's, I I wanted just to be honest. Now, they ain't doing something, I'm gonna tell them, no, they didn't put no money up, they gave us the deed. And that's what was yesterday. So anyway, just wanted to be clear on that and I appreciate all of our roles and all. I've seen things where the president can't make the vice president, but I wasn't there. The next person went and nobody asked me. But I don't care, long as we were represented, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And as I prefaced earlier, it was my personal opinion, we all had one. And for someone to stand up and go on and on about Lot 28 and didn't put a penny in, as you confirmed, the city was out of it. So it it just struck me the wrong way, that the money was not, after we asked and said we needed it, we're not flowing with milk and honey, that it didn't happen and that was the purpose of my comment. That was the only thing, nothing to do with whether or not the purpose is a good thing for Lot 28. I said that earlier. It's a great thing and we're gonna move forward and the county obviously thinks it's a great thing because we've committed $9 million to it. So it's not a little thing. And so I needed to make that comment and.
No, I just wanted to clarify, the role of the city was, you can have a money and buy a house, but unless the homeowner signs over the deeds, you can't have the house. So we didn't have the deed and I was just like you, I thought we voted on it, it was over. But I found out that, no, they have to sign off, the lawyers had to get together. And they had not done that, it was, it's July. We all voted July 1st and it was October. So we needed to make sure, even though they said they would let us have it, that don't mean anything if we didn't get it in writing. So that's what we were trying to make sure that it's in writing. So thank you, Madam President.
And really, he didn't, he could sign off of it, he didn't need a press conference for it, to take credit for what's going on with the Walk of Fame. So I I'll move on and Jeff, you have any comments?
No comments, Madam President, but I do have two by leaves in front of you today. I've got by leave item number one and number two. By leave item number one is a resolution adding one position to the table of organization for the Administration Department of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. Specifically, this is when, within the Human Resources Department, this is the creation on the table of organization of a Human Resources Officer to position. Specifically, this position will be allocated to the Department of Job and Family Services in Hamilton County to help with the backlog of positions that we have over there, the hiring problems that we have getting positions into case worker positions and also to do the class comp work. To take, right now, we have all of that or most of that funneling through positions in the general and in our central HR office. This would create a position that would specifically focus on those activities over in JFS, just given the magnitude and the volume of the work that comes through there in a department with 800 employees, as well as with some critical positions in terms of intake case workers, ongoing case workers, et cetera. So we wanted to separate this out. The position will be funded through Job and Family Services through our cost plan. And so ultimately not out of the County General Fund. The administration recommends approval, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
Madam President, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to find out, I I'll support this resolution, but I wanted to bring up, this is stuff on timing on different things. We had voted all to support the 513 relief bus. We had put money aside for staffing and all those things that are needed. And even though it's now been corrected, I was disappointed that for several, for a long period of time, too long period of time, I found out that those individuals were, there was a a memo that said they were volunteers. And so I will support this today, but I want to come back quickly. I know that in your report, Mr. Administrator, that you said we're gonna correct this, but we started this bus in March. And I'd like to see the staffing, these folks are out there, should be premium pay because they're out there dealing with folks directly out in COVID. They should get mileage reimbursement and all those things, they're carrying tables and those kind of things. So I I'm okay with hiring some HR people, but I want to know when we're gonna have this strike team for the 513 relief bus. One of the things that that, and I want to, I do want to thank Commissioner Dreehouse on this too. Her office had asked about making sure that it's sustainable after COVID. And so this is a new way we're gonna be doing business, not just out here because of COVID. We're gonna be mobile, we're gonna be out here. And I want to just say that the workers that's been out there have been superb, they're out there in the heat, they're out there in the cold today, they out there in the humidity, they were. They're running from one location to the other. So I would like to, this, I'm gonna vote for this today, but I want to see where is that vote? To make sure that we have a strike team for the 513 relief bus. We're averaging about 100 people minimum at these locations. And we want to make sure that when they're taking them in and and jobs, family services out there with their laptops and computers and someone came down from Columbus that used to, actually, he works at the SBA, but he just came by to check out what we were doing and they were like, oh, my God, they got laptops, they're doing it. And we're doing a great job. I just want to make sure that if there's a vote needed from us, I want to make that vote, I want something permanent, that this team will be able to go from beginning to end and it doesn't take away from the other responsibilities that we have coming into jobs and family services. So just wanted to put that on the table, Madam President, to see when that might be coming forward to us because I know it was a part of what we passed back in, I think it was March.
Thank you. Did you want to comment?
I'm happy to, yeah. So as Vice President Reese says, yeah, when we started with the 513 relief bus program, we had, you know, obviously, the first couple of of events that we had, the attendee population was lower than it is now. So JFS started the program off, kicked the program off with a more of a volunteer model, which quickly after we saw the the attendees ramping up, became became evident that that wasn't going to work for the the permanent program. So JFS adapted. They now do have permanent employees that are assigned to that, they have a permanent manager who is assigned to that. Now, we don't know whether those staff are going to be there long term. So we are in the process of reviewing and will be posting for permanent positions for the long term. Maybe it'll be some of the people who are already permanently assigned. But we'll see when we, when we get those folks hired. So that strike team, as Commissioner Reese calls it, is essentially in place with current permanent employees. But those might be replaced with people that we that we ultimately hire in to to serve the long-term needs of the bus.
Madam President, I just want to make sure because we, if we need to vote on something, we're putting a budget together.
Yeah, I don't think we'll need to vote on those divisions.
Because I never voted on volunteers. I don't want anyone working here at the county, the government, to ever feel like we do this kind of work we're talking about. This is not. We do this kind of work we're talking about, this is not, you know, volunteer at, you know, King's Island. This is, we're doing, they're doing some serious work, helping people stay in their homes, helping people pay their bills. And I just wanted, it was brought to me and I just wanna make sure that that is clear, if there has to be a vote on it, whatever, we put money aside. But I don't want it ever to be a volunteer situation, because nobody else is walking around here with volunteer stuff. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that, and if that needed to be, um, so we never have to revisit that ever again. Because maybe we weren't as clear, even though we put the money there. I don't wanna stress out anybody at jobs of family service, you already got a heavy load, we need another group because there's some more, more we, they're taking on. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, because specifically since we're coming up with two HR positions, uh. And if there needed to be more, I just wanna say I'm supportive of it with the term of the cares or, uh. Reinvestment term, you know, when those are gone, then we have to look and see if we can still afford it.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
No comments.
With no further comments, I'd like to ma- make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, by leave number two is just the monthly investment report for the month of August 2021, the administration recommends approval.
Uh, Madam President, do we have a total number on this? If we could just.
The, on the.
Our investments.
On the investment, actually don't have the, the data item in front of me here, so I don't know if, uh. So as the board is aware from serving on the investment advisory committee, there are multiple funds that are managed by the county. Uh, so there is not really one fund here, but if you look in, in the back there, you have the municipal bond account, which is. Uh, the par amount of, of 21.147 million, but there's also additional funds that represent. Uh, the entirety of the, um, idle and, and, and active investments, uh, held, held by the county. Um, so the, for instance, under the, uh, position statement subtotal, which would be on page 11 of 29. There's a, a total in that sub-fund of 350 million, uh, 900, 350, 903,000 dollars. And then it's just, it's gonna depend upon the different sub-fund that you break it down into, so I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, that's good, Madam President, I just wanted some people to know that, what, what we were talking about, so this is, this is good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
No comments.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt, uh, by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we can move forward to our regular agenda item MSD.
Vice President, Commissioner Drehouse, hi, I'm Jack Rennecamp, uh, with Metropolitan Sewer District. And with me today is, uh, Alex Schumach, also with MSD. We're here to present on item one, which is for sanitary sewer 6154, Parakeet Drive, local sewer. House numbers 6,002 to 6,068. And this legislative request is for you to approve a resolution to proceed with construction. This project is an assessment project, meaning under, um, Ohio law, there are several steps the board must take in order to progress. Uh, the project to eventual completion, meaning construction. Um, and this is the second to last, um, of those steps, uh, which is to consider if you want to, um, proceed with those construction. As a background to this project, um, your board heard, um, the, the requirements and the request of property owners. For this, uh, project, which is located in Green Township in Hamilton County. Um, in February, on February 25th, there was a public hearing that was held and no property, it was a virtual public hearing, of course, due to COVID. Um, and no, uh, property owners attended that, that virtual meeting. Presented, um, the requirements and the request of the 10 property owners, which are now nine. Due to a property consolidation from one property owner who had a single-family property in a vacant parcel. So those, those property owners requested, the majority of which requested, um, for the board to proceed with the installation of a public sewer. All of these properties are on, um, what is known as HSTSs or home sewage treatment systems. Um, of which, according to Hamilton County Public Health, there's about a 56% fail rate. Um, so the, the request at this point in time in front of the board is to. Um, approve the resolution to, to proceed with construction. Also, as an adjunct to this, um, the cost of the project has increased by about 14%. Since, uh, the February hearing, um, thi- this increases based upon, um, an addition of subgrade fill material for road restoration. A 10% bid markup, um, adjustment to conform to a new costing manual that MSD has, has deployed in July. Uh, an update to unit prices based upon market conditions, again, related to, uh, situations with sourcing and supplying. Um, that's a background is COVID. Um, and a, and a, excuse me, a project cost escalation factor based upon the schedule of the project to construct. Again, the property owners under our MSD rules and regulations that apply to assessments will pay no more than $12,000 for this project. MSD will provide credits for the balance of the cost on the, on an individual basis. One additional point to note is that Hamilton County Community Development has identified a $6,000 per property available fund source. Um, if property owners, number one, wish to apply, and number two, they're eligible, which is based upon 80% median household income. The Hamilton, uh, the, um, Hamilton County Community Development, uh, Department, as well as MSD is going to send out a reminder letter. To those property owners to encourage them to apply. The deadline is December 31st. This, this, if they qualify, this application, if, if they're approved, um, would reduce their $12,000 assessment then to $6,000. Um, which is an incredible savings for them. Of course, any private side work must be completed at the cost to the property owner itself, it's not included in the public improvement. Um, also, my understanding is that after today's, uh, that, as a result of today's meeting, uh, the Green Township Administrator Frank Birkenhour. Is, uh, going to be sending a letter to the, these benefited property owners as well, informing them of this opportunity, encouraging them to apply. Certainly, if you have any questions, um, Mr. Schumach and I are available, thank you.
Thank you so much, when you talk about the 14% increase, um, isn't that normally, um, put in the bid process? That you know there may be a upcharge at some time, was that possibly considered? Uh, is this 14% more than what we thought that some, because it always changes in a, in a project?
Prices fluctuate especially during this particular, um, season and time. But that, this was an increase from the, uh, the cost of construction that was estimated for the public hearing.
And I know it's an increase, but don't you normally put that in your, in the budget that there may be an increase? Or is this 14% more than we thought we would have to pass?
It's 14% more than what we estimated it to be at the time. So it's, an explanation is further detailed in the legislation.
I saw that, yeah, okay, thank you, uh, Vice President Reese.
No question.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, so I just wanted to clarify something. So, uh, my recollection is that this is the project, we had information that was from years ago. And we asked MSD to give us an update, I, I, Jack, I don't remember the year.
It was, uh, and my apologies for omitting that, it was in 2011. As a result of the public hearing, um, in 2021, the board asked for MSD to update the interest of.
Right, right.
Benefited property owners, that changed from 70%, which was in 2011. And so this project is long in the tooth, um, and it is currently 56%.
Yeah, so I just.
So meets the criteria.
Yeah, so as far as this delay goes, the, the reason for the delay was that we had, um, a recommendation based on information from 2011. And so this board said, we would like an update, because people have come and gone in this area. And now we're not dealing perhaps with the same homeowners that we were last time, and evidently we weren't. And so we asked MSD to go back, um, to then give us an update as to the, what the new group of homeowners thought about the project. And here we are today, so I just wanted to provide some clarity there. Um, I regret that, um, the pri- and prices are going up on everything everywhere, um, because of the impact of COVID. But, um, part of the reason we, we asked them to go back was to make sure that the community that's impacted here really wanted this project.
And about, uh, 40 to 50% uh, of the existing property owners from 2011 to 2021 had changed.
Yeah.
Wow.
President.
Yes.
If I could just a fa- a quick follow-up question, uh, Jack, in the, the no votes, if you will, um, in this case were non-respondents, is that?
That's my understanding, there was no response that said, no, I do not want this project, they were all non-responsive to the request.
Thank you, thank you. No, with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to note that the next time you'll see this legislation before you is our request for appropriating the funds to construct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and he was ready to speak over there, huh? I'm good, okay, okay, so we can move forward on our consent agenda items, um, there are several. Um, and before I go through the, making a motion, I, and it's item two. Item two and three are for adoption and items five through 11 are for adoption. But before I make a motion, I would like to, uh, see if there are any comments, uh, Vice President Reese.
No comments.
No comments.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt items two and three and items five through 11.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And we also have to receive for the record items four and item 12. Any comments as it relates to receiving for the record, Vice President Reese?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse.
No comments.
I just have one comment on item 12, there are 16 liquor licenses that were applied for. There was no objection and the sheriff department normally looks over this. And just for, uh, you guys' information, I know there are certain criteria when, um, you decide not to have an objection. And from what I can remember, if there were a lot of police calls, there may be an objection from the, uh, the sheriff department, police or sheriff. And also sometimes, um, the liquor license has to do with the proximity to the schools, um, where this liquor is held. And I know there were a lot of Speedway, uh, um, Speedway, uh, gas stations that have asked for, uh, liquor licenses. So my concern is that, um, there is also a criteria, and there used to be, and I'm gonna make sure that I asked the sheriff about it. That you can only have so many in a neighborhood. Um, and so I'm gonna find out who actually reviews those objections and are we making sure that we're looking at that? Even though there may not have been sheriff calls, are we looking at how many are in each neighborhood? Because I just have a feeling that, uh, those restaurants that are not able to cook and have people in, they, they certainly can do, have the bars. And there's a lot of them, uh, that are having the liquor. And so as we approve more of them or receive for the record, that we need to make sure that that criteria. Um, of course, I'm sure they're following it, but I'd like to know if there's any new criteria, because we certainly don't want, uh, bars and all over the neighborhood and small neighborhoods. So anyway, that was just my comment, I'll let you guys know when I get back on that. So I would like to make a motion, receive for the record, items four and 12.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. So we have before us an executive session, we get back to it. I make a motion to, to go into executive session pursuant to RC section 121.22 G3. To conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.